All right, I'll open up the 2000 or June 26th Risk Managers Committee meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. Thank you for those in person down here. Want to start off before we start the meeting, we are going to be using Slido for one item. It's the minutes from the March 20th Risk Managers Finance Officers and Joint Managers Meeting. That Slido code, if you plan on voting, is RM 202506. Hopefully, everybody can log in. If you want to do that. I'll start off with oral communications. Any person present desiring to address the Risk Managers Committee on proper matters may do so at this time. Do we have anybody from the public wishing to address the committee? Hearing none?
Can you hear us okay on the other side on Zoom? Okay, just checking, thank you.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the Joint Managers Finance Officers and Risk Managers Committee Minutes for the meeting of March 20th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion?
A second?
A second.
Thank you. We use them Slido?
Yes, I will vote. Please vote on Slido. We have 14 votes and 15 votes, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Booth's presentation on Public Safety Mental Health Loss Control Services.
All right, thank you, Brad. So this particular item is, as Brad said, Public Safety Mental Health Loss Control Services. The JPIA has a history of making available and supporting mental health services to our public safety employees. We've done that in a few different ways through the years. We've done training. We have financially supported the use of a mental health app. And we're bringing this item to you today because we would like to make some changes to the way that we support members. We're making some changes to the way that we approach providing these services as well as making available some additional financial support. And to present this item today, we have Senior Risk Manager Tim Cars. So Tim, take it away.
Thank you, Alex. Good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this to the committee. We do have some visuals that I think we'll be sharing in the short term. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. So as Alex mentioned, the authority has long recognized the importance of mental health. And he also elaborated that for the last several years, authority leadership has allotted some funds through our budget to help our members with their mental health initiatives. Some of that might be training, some consulting, and as he mentioned, technology that helps to connect employees within our agencies to the vital services that they might need. We desire to do more. Ultimately, we desire to help our members do more with regards to mental health. So for the last several years, I have been focused on services that our members are using, services that they would like to use, services that they deem as critical and in some cases are already doing. And we've spent a lot of time with stakeholders and individuals where this matters the most. In fact, I'm joined today by Lieutenant Aaron Schaefer of the San Luis Obispo Police Department. He's online. Aaron, can you hear us okay? I saw him earlier on there.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I'm here. I was on mute, I waved, but I'm here.
He's got palm trees in the background, but I probably.
I'm on vacation, it's all right.
In a few minutes, Aaron is going to talk about the approach San Luis Obispo is taking to mental health. But in before that, I'm going to talk a little bit about these services more and how important they are. There's very few people around that have not heard of mental health or have seen firsthand that it's a a growing issue, growing concern amongst everybody, not just public safety. Whether it's doom scrolling on the news or social media, or it's relationship building or lack thereof, or it's someone from the public, or someone from your neighbor's yard, or anything that might just be leading towards mental health concerns. There are a number of different causes and exposures that lead ourselves in this direction. Jeff is on the call as well, and we are regularly working with this on the work comp side. I'll show some data in just a few seconds about the business side of it. But on the human side of it, I think we all recognize that mental health can be a very serious issue. We have a lot of triggering activities within our agencies. We have a lot of things that can be of utmost importance that we don't necessarily have a lot of control over. Maybe those are critical incidents or traumatic incidents that our police and fire are being exposed to. They're the ones running towards these events while the rest of us are the ones running away from them. It could be something like unstable or threatening individuals that they're working with. It can be responding to traumatic vehicle accidents where there's children involved or various other things. And it could also just be life-threatening issues that that they're working with. Our police and firefighters are dealing with this as a part of their job. It's built into the DNA of their positions and their job requirements. And as a result, we have found that there is a growing trend of mental health servicing and needs that are being recognized by our members. A lot of them are contracting with service providers to provide services in-house. A lot of them are trying to expand this and are trying to find a good methodology or a good formula for how they can address this within their agencies to be not only utilized, but also to be expanded and helpful. And on the human side of it, we all know why. Mental health improvement and mental health management helps us be better people, helps us be better partners, better employees, coworkers, better individuals in life. And I think when we see and start listing the benefits of prioritizing mental health, we kind of start realizing that there's just too many to list. We can do this as a loss control measure through a partnership with JPIA and our members and a couple of different fronts, and that's what we're hopeful to talk about today, hoping for some feedback and discussion and see how we can utilize these services and resources to help our members do what it is that they do. Veronica, if you don't mind switching to the next slide, I'll go over some statistics. You can hit the click one more time, there's one more item on here. This is just data going back to 2019, that's all six years. This is specific to public safety, police, fire, and we have some other non-sworn public safety departments in our group as well. That's a lot, 78 claims, over $100,000 in average cost per claim. And you can see what that total incurred amount is. And of course, there's additional costs to this as well, hiring, retraining, staffing, temporary overtime expenses related to lost work time, and the obvious concerns related to IDRs and other human resources related items that we don't necessarily see here in terms of costs. Aaron will bring this home in a little bit, but for me, it started several years ago when one of our police officers was shot in San Luis Obispo while in the line of duty and lost his life. There is obviously the business side of that, the workers' compensation costs and associated costs around that. But the department lost over the course of time, seven or eight officers after that, from just leaving the industry, leaving the business, and not able to continue their careers. And this is a growing trend that we have a real concern and a real interest in helping our members manage. Next slide, please. So that's the business side of it. We have understood the importance, as I mentioned, for a long time, and the importance of creating a comprehensive program managed at the member level. We want that comprehensive program to support mental health, but we want it to be preventative as well. We want to focus on a few items that you see here, mental health assessments, wellness checks, training, technology, and consulting. I'm going to ask Aaron to talk a little bit more about the mental health assessments and wellness checks in a second. He'll get, he'll drive that home and kind of describe that a little more than I will. But these are preventative services that can be treated as though voluntary, mandatory, however we want to build it within our agencies. But as a means of addressing mental, normalizing services related to assessments, wellness checks, therapy, other types of behavioral health and mental health-related activities, normalizing them so that it's a normal part of the routine. But also on the reactive side, critical incident intervention for traumatic or critical incidents as they happen. And we'll talk a bit more about that as well. We want to partner with our members, and one of the best ways to do that is we want to offer funding for assistance. Everyone here is probably familiar with employee assistance programs, EAPs. Almost every agency probably has one, not required to have one, but most agencies do. These are very cost-effective and broad programs that our members are able to offer their employees. In almost every case, they have counseling and other types of mental health resources available for them. We have one here available to JPIA employees, I'm sure you have one as well. We've learned a lot about the usefulness of these programs over time. And one thing that we have learned very consistently across our membership is police and fire don't use them. They don't touch the EAPs. There's a lot of reasons for that. We don't have to necessarily get into the reasons for that now, but there are concerns related to having these types of services out in the open, seeking these types of services, having it recorded or documented, or whatever the feeling is, having that third party involved. Another thing I've learned is that police officers, firefighters, they have a bond or a relationship with their watch commander, with their chief, but they don't necessarily have that with city hall. When you add that third party to the mix, services are not necessarily utilized. I've determined that having California JPIA involved too much also creates a barrier. It's another third party to seeking services that are very sensitive and very personal. So what we'd like to do is encourage our members to build these programs in-house, manage them in-house. We will, of course, provide resources for that, but manage them with who they want to work with, the service providers they want to work with, and the types of services that they feel are needed the most. But we want to partner with our member agencies on that. Let's talk a little bit more about those services. The next slide, please, Veronica. So these are the different categories on the preventative services that you saw earlier. As I mentioned, the first one on the left, mental health assessments, testing, wellness checks. This is something that Aaron is going to talk about in a little bit. The idea is a regularly scheduled, maybe it's voluntary, maybe it's mandatory, depending on how the department wants to operate, but wellness checks where we have a discussion, talk, therapy sessions, normalize it. Maybe we're talking about something substantive, or maybe something specific, or maybe it's just how you're doing, how's your year been. Mental health assessments are something a little different, where we actually do testing or routine testing to see mental health fitness. And then the department supervisor referrals are as needed or when a department feels it is a necessary service for individual for various reasons. Retreats are something that we've probably heard of. Many of our agencies may have taken advantage of these in the past. There's short-term and long-term benefits and types of programs available to that. Those typically be on the reactive side. Retreats tend to be something that we provide an individual that may have gone down the work comp route or may be heading that direction. And then technology, as we mentioned earlier, we've offered some partnerships for technology that connects individuals with vital services. It might be an app, Cortico is an app we promoted in the past. There's other apps available like Lighthouse and a few others focused on mental health services. There are other mental health and wellness technology services available and being used by our membership right now. Some of them vary, and then one that comes to mind is sharp performance. It seems to be programmed use. We want, we want our members to take a look at these and determine for themselves if these things are helpful or not, and then we can offer our funding for that as well. Next slide, please. All right, critical incident, catastrophic incident intervention. So as I mentioned earlier, I alluded to it very quickly. Sometimes our agency staff members are responding to really tough and critical activities or issues. Maybe it's a car accident that they're the first responder to. Maybe it's a car accident that they have to extract the individuals from. Maybe it's something different, maybe it's an active shooter. Maybe there, it's something that's just so dynamic in nature that we could kind of start listing and listing what those are. There are proven statistics around how quickly we talk and try to unpack what happened with an individual so that they can start to reason and help them better understand it rather than just burying it down deep. The 24/7 Critical Incident Stress Management debriefs are something that are very common in arrangements for mental health servicing with service providers. On-call services, maybe it's in the middle of the night, maybe it's in the afternoon, but it's something that the watch commander or the chief decide, okay, we just had this thing happen. Let's get this debrief going right now. Maybe we'll do it on an individual basis, maybe we'll do it on a group basis. Whatever we're doing, we're going to try to address this and try to normalize talking about it. And maybe that will build it to something that's helpful for the individuals that had to experience it rather than just not talking about it at all. Ongoing intervention services, hopefully this is something we don't ever need, but in the event of something traumatic happening to a department, especially something personal, there's a need to have ongoing services where someone can try to help themselves along with a professional to talk it through and understand, maybe on a more regular basis. So that first item with the bullet 24/7 Critical Incident, this is a single debrief to talk about what happened and try to unpack it. The next one is an ongoing service that might be needed depending on a traumatic event. Both of these are very important, both of these are very easy to skip over. But we've, through experience with our members, and in particular cases where it's been needed, we have seen proven results from both of these helping and putting everything on the table for an individual to help them kind of work through it. Next slide, please. There's also training and peer support program development available through this program. One of the critical items within a public safety department has been determined to be a solid peer support program. It might involve neighboring agencies, it might involve the county, it might involve just people. Having a proven peer support program is one of the most beneficial things to a department's comprehensive mental health and wellness program. It might be just someone to sit with you at the emergency room while you're waiting. It might be someone to talk to over the phone or text, like, hey, this just happened. It might be something a little bit more in-depth than that. Whatever it happens to be, it can't just be a call chain or a series of phone numbers. It has to be a little bit more detailed with that. We have service providers that are working with some of our members right now to help them revise and maintain their existing peer support programs to keep them vibrant, to keep them real, so that they can be utilized when they need to be utilized. Excellent. So this is my last slide before I hand it over to Aaron. The billing and reimbursement side of this. We, as I mentioned earlier, have a desire to try to stay to the side of this so that our departments can manage it themselves. I trust the chiefs and the commanders and the police officers that work in our agencies, and I've learned that they have ideas and they know what's best for their departments. But with our guidance, with our consulting, with our helping connect the dots, we can help empower them to work with trusted partners that they'd like to work with and try to stay out of it. So it might be a reimbursement basis, or there might be some direct billing available. Either way, it's managed through the risk manager, the regional risk manager, seven of us that work with our agencies. And those individuals know their agencies better than the rest of us, and they can help tailor a program that works best for them. The next item, your maximum annual reimbursement. We do have over 40, no, we have over 60 individual departments, police and fire, if you add all of them up across our membership. So obviously, funding is something that we need to be mindful for. One thing that I've determined is a good idea, and our Director of Services agrees, is a cost-sharing element to the preventative services is a good idea. Our members having skin in the game, our members being involved with this, where something that they do have the budget for, but they're getting financial assistance from us, helps them keep their eye on the ball and helps them wrap their head around making these services happen. We're not in the departments, we're not there all the time. They are, they're the ones utilizing the services. We want to make sure that our members are not just getting into an agreement with the service provider for a lot of money and then handing it over to us to pay, and then they never use it. We want them to actually use the services. We need these students of service providers that are providing services, and then the member can seek reimbursement for us. As you can see on the preventative side, we're offering up to $15,000 per member, per preventative services, and this includes services, as I noted in the second bullet there on the preventative side. There are some services that we intend to fully fund. Critical Catastrophic Incident Intervention, as I mentioned earlier, is something that we feel we should be funding completely. We don't want our members to have to consider whether or not money is an issue and if they're going to do these. We hopefully hope that these types of services happen a lot less than the rest of them do. That's hopefully the goal. And also, training and general consulting services can come into play using existing budgets. Our training budget, these are essentially training services available through various service providers. We've identified several that we can point our members to that can be handled through our training department now with the scheduling and payments process that we have there. On the general consulting services, I mentioned peer support program development. That is a common consulting service that our members can benefit from. There might be others. It depends on if the member, the regional risk manager, come up with a solution and a game plan that they feel fits the mold for these services on whether or not that is something that happens. But our Risk Technician Program budget can absorb a lot of the consulting services that we can offer. The next step in this process is to hand it over to Lieutenant Schaefer. He's going to talk about these services from San Luis Obispo's perspective. And as this slide starts to populate with photographs, I will let you know that Aaron has been a very critical piece of the puzzle for me in understanding why our departments want services, why they need them. And his passion and his desire to help his fellow officers has been very impressive to me, and I'm really kind of glad that he's here. Aaron, if you can hear us and see what's going on on the screen, I'm going to pass it up to you to talk a little bit about your side of this and your program.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you. Thank you, Tim. And just thank you to the executive committee for allowing me to come on today. Obviously, you can see this slide here. Most of these events are in San Luis, starting back in 2000 during all the protests. And, you know, obviously, we've had some critical incidents. And it's not just San Luis Obispo Police Department individually, it's everybody, right? It's everybody around the state, it's everybody around the country who does a job, like Tim said so eloquently, that, you know, when we run into these situations, some we know that are coming, some we don't, you know, and we react to it and we protect the community. This is a, this is a project that I started like four years ago. You can see that picture in the top right-hand corner, I was directly involved. I was a supervisor of the unit that served the search warrant where Detective Luca was shot and killed, and also Detective Roscoe was shot twice. He survived, but again, he's not back to work because a lot of, one, mental health stuff as well as some physical injuries that he sustained. And so I kind of just had this passion for, like, how do we help our people? We know, we work for a small agency, but at the same time, this could be totally applicable to a larger agency. But when you know everybody and you work with everybody on a daily basis, you just don't, you just don't know what people have going on, both at work and what affects them and what affects people can vary between experience and life experience. And so my goal was to, how do we get people help? And I've gotten a lot of resistance. Obviously, I've been in this profession for 18 years, and, you know, I talked to people who've been in this profession for 25 years. And, you know, the old adage of, you know, you suck it up, and the stigma of going to a mental health wellness check sounds frightening, or something that they would never have thought of when they started their career. Well, here's the deal. We, this, we're in a different world than we were 25 years ago. What the officers are having to do and see, and everything's on video, the public, everybody's video recording us, you know, there is just more stress than there ever has been. And I think that's important. And I will tell you, I wasn't forced to go to therapy, but at the same time, it saved my career. And after a year of work of taking care of myself, I was able to come back to work. So that was me, but everybody else is going through some of the, some of these same things. And yeah, although my scenario was probably one of the worst scenarios you could possibly be in, the reality is what affects somebody is different. And so if you want to keep going, I think you skipped two, skipped ahead two slides. And what it comes down to is we, we have to have a foundation. We gotta, we gotta make it so there's no question of, you know, why, why do I have to go to this visit? I don't need help because we're going to get resistance. And, but the department's supports from the chief down on this policy. And obviously, we've had a peer support program for a long time, if you can go to the next slide. And so we've, we've had a good foundation of a good program. We started ours like 16 years ago, and, you know, thanks to some support from CJPIA, we've had the ability to send our people the training and get the best training, thanks to some other programs that CJPI has. You know, this is a, I don't know if anybody knows Dr. Sherilyn Lee, she's pretty renowned. She's traveling the US teaching on mental health and PTSI. We call it PTSI for post-traumatic stress injury instead of a disorder. Obviously, an injury can be fixed and a disorder can't. So I think that's the most important thing. But, you know, she has this quote, and she, I tell this to everybody, it's, it's okay not to be okay, but it's not okay to stay that way. And what this program is going to do is get it so people aren't going to stay that way. And that if they do have things going on, this allows them to walk in the door, you know, once a year and be in front of a therapist. And you know what? They may not say anything. Or they may disclose that there's 10 critical incidences that have been bothering them and they didn't even know it. And I think that's the message of the long-term benefits of this program. If you want to go to the next slide. And obviously, I'm going to skip this slide, go over pretty quickly because Tim covered a bunch of it, just the kind of the history of what we've done, EAP programs. Nobody in our agency has ever used the AP. So even though it's been around for, you know, 80-plus years, nobody, to my knowledge, has used it. Obviously, it'd be confidential and I wouldn't know, but talking to people, nobody's used it because we talk about culturally competent therapists, right? People who know our profession and people who either have a family member or a spouse, or they've just immersed themselves in our world to know how to, how to work with us. Because we're all type A personalities and we're, you know, we're all very regimented in how we do things, and we have to be for our job and our safety. But realistically, we need to break down the barrier in order for people to have that. And the culturally competent therapists are the ones who are able to do that and connect with our, with our officers. I'm going to go to the next one. Obviously, we've been doing a great job in law enforcement for the last couple of years, but I really put my foot down. About four years ago, I started this annual wellness checks process. And here's, I get a lot of resistance from people, obviously. There's been some conversations about, I don't need this, I don't know. And here's, here's what it comes down to, is people don't know what they don't know, or they don't know what they need. And I use the example of a story, I'm going to share with you guys, not in great detail, but just a summary of an example of where something may have happened, and it doesn't affect the person now, but may affect them down the road. And, you know, obviously, a critical incident for us would be going to an infant death. And two of our younger officers went to one three years ago. And there was, there was a critical incident stress debrief from the fire department, and some of my coworkers were like, oh, they don't need to go. And I'm like, how do you, who are you to say that they don't need to go to this? Did you even ask them? And so these two individuals didn't go, and, you know, they're both single, not married, don't have kids. And if you're going to, if we can have a conversation that, when he has a six-month-old child, which is the age of the child that they did CPR on, if that's not going to affect him, then I looked at him and I said, you're crazy. Like, there's just no way. Yeah, right now it doesn't affect him, but three years from now or five years from now, when he has, when he's married and has kids, it's going to impact him. So those are the things that, that I'm thinking about. These wellness checks allow our people to have access to these services when they need it. Yeah, they have to go every year, at least for our agency, they have to go every year, once a year for an hour. But realistically, they can go three times and not have anything to say. But then it's that one time that they go, and they're like, holy moly, this is bothering me, I didn't know it, right? Go ahead, there's a couple bullets on that slide, if you want to just click twice for me. So, you know, here's some of the things that we've dealt with, I know Tim covered. Uh, so you know, he- here's some of the things that we've dealt with, I know Tim covered it, we've had seven people retire after Luca. Uh, better with retirement, you hear all these other agencies, everybody's going through it. And what, what, what are we doing as an agency uh, to, to prevent those from happening? And what can we do better? And I think this is, today, you're, you're here, why this is better, and I think it's going to reduce the amount of retirement that we have. You know, and it's not just about work, uh, I know, sure, a story in a little bit, but it's about our wives, our kids, being a good parent, good, a good father, you know? And the things of this job that we don't think are affecting us, they're affecting us. And I've heard from wives and spouses since, since I've implemented some beta testing for this program. And they're, they're calling me and thanking me. And I'm like, well, I didn't realize, I mean, I, I knew because my wife benefited from it, but at the same time, like, they're, they see the value in it. And obviously, you know, we want to increase our system debriefs and whatnot, but the stigma is huge. And I gave you that example of that twenty-five-year-old cop who's kind of resistant to this. And I think there's more of that out there. Um, I think now this generation that's coming up, I think they're more open. I think they've been exposed and the world's different than, you know, when I was their age, even the, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. So uh, those are some of the reasons, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. You know, I'm going to skip through kind of these, just on the essence of your guys' time. But this is kind of just our wells, our, our department's wellness policy. Uh, you can go ahead and just read that slide, but our program is intended to be a holistic approach to taking care of people. And here's our P, our police department's mission statement for our peer support team. Like, obviously, we're, we collaborate with a lot of different agencies in our county, but realistically, like, this is, as you can see, it's not just about professional problems of things, it's about your family, it's about yourself. Because what that does is, not only makes you a better parent, but also makes you better for our community and the people that we serve. Go ahead and go to the next one, I think the next slide should be the program. So, so why, why do we need annual wellness checks? And I, I kind of shared some of those stories already, but realistically, we need them. And what it comes down to is, I'll just give you two examples. Uh, when I beta tested, beta tested this program, I went to our police officers' union. As you know, like, unions, we have to meet and confer with any kind of program like this. And I went to the POA president and vice president, and I sat him down and went through our, our policy. And I basically said, hey, I need two people. Um, and these are obviously people I've known for a long time, the two gentlemen. And I basically said, I need two of your members to, to go through this program and give me an idea of, you know, how it's going to work. And so I sent them both, they both volunteered to go, which sho- shocked me, to be quite honest with you. But again, those guys who've been resistant to it in the past, and both those guys have been in, a lot of those critical incidents, or those photos that I showed you, they were like, oh, we'll go. It gave them, that, this is how I viewed it, it gave them a reason to say, yeah, I probably should have been going to this a long time ago, but we'll, we'll test it for you, you know? And as soon as that, as soon as that happened, so we, they went through the process and they went to their appointment, they didn't have to share the information, they just said, yeah, I attended. They voluntarily shared some of their personal uh, information, which this policy basically pretty much says, you don't have to say anything, we just have to know that you went. And so they've had, both have since been back, that was about two months ago, three months ago. And they've both been back for multiple visits, follow-up visits. Um, and one of those gentlemen, I ran into his wife, and him and I live close by together. But just to kind of show you the impact that it has on families, and she came up to me and she's like, Aaron, she's like, I really appreciate you making Sean, which is the gentleman's name, go, because it has completely changed him. And that just like struck me, it's like, holy crap, this is, this is not just about our people. It is, but in the end, it's going to, it's going to exponentially affect kids and families uh, within our organization. So kind of just how it works, you can click the next slide, the bullets kind of walk us through like what the program looks like. There are other agencies doing something similar to this uh, around the state, there's probably three or four different agencies. Uh, so it's a relatively new thing. Uh, and so we, we as an agency decided that we would send every employee once a year. Uh, there's talks about, you know, our records, some of our civilian staff that don't see necessarily, but they, they work with us, they hear stories, people talking in the hallway. And so we made the decision uh, because that could affect them, and they read reports. And so the chief and I met and we decided it would be all employees. Obviously, with cops, confidentiality is huge, right? Because we have fitness for duties. Um, and I wanted to make it very clear, this is not a fitness for duty, we don't know anything that's been said. Alls we know is that you went and that you showed up. So we, we chosen to go with the Counseling Team International, is, which is a, uh, based out of Southern California. But they've worked their way up here and we have a great relationship with their CEO and most of their management team uh, to collaborate and make this program successful. So really, uh, the employee before their annual eval, they have sixty, sixty days, they'll, they'll get a notice sixty days before their evaluation date. And they'll have to make an appointment and attend, and attend a, a one-hour mental health visit. Um, and alls they do is they tell their supervisor that they went. And then when they find that, when they actually complete their evaluations, when they sign the document, uh, there's a line in there, it says, I attended my annual wellness check per our department policy. Um, I'm not going to go through too much about on-duty time if possible, or what payment. But obviously, we have an MOU with our, uh, union that we have to follow, so those guidelines will be followed uh, accordingly. So the, the caveat is here is, the goal is to get in front of people. And you see that last line, if anybody's already established a therapist, we're not going to make them go to a TCTI person necessarily. If you've already been going to therapy for several years, we're not going to ask you to go to somebody else. They just, they just have to provide the name of that therapist and that they went within that calendar year of their rating period. So if your rating, if your annual eval is, let's say, in July, so from July of twenty-four to July of twenty-five, I saw my therapist and this is who I saw, and that's it. It's on the honor system, because the goal, the goal is not to, you know, like, to micromanage the program, the goal is that the program's going to take care of itself, but there has to be some checks and balances. Go ahead and go to the next one for me. You know, and so, you know, obviously, the costs associated with it, and I, I've been working with Tim for the last couple of months about, you know, partnering with CJPI to help subsidize, as you know, you know, with the economy and city budget, it's, it can be challenging to, to, to squeeze, uh, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, uh, even though this is a great program. Um, but I think this is where we need to be. And so we have ninety-two members, and so all those members will go and uh, attend once a year. Go ahead and go to the next one. And I just want to end with this, um, most, most, the average person sees about three critical incidences in their entire life. Law enforcement, it's like one seventy-eight, I just say two hundred, critical incidents throughout their career. Um, and we just don't know which ones are going to affect people uh, differently. And so by partnering with CJPI and TCTI and our department's mission to take care of our people, uh, I'm very grateful, um, that this is even, sometimes I sit here and try and pinch myself because the reality of this program kicking, kicking off, uh, is, is kind of surreal, honestly. Um, and, and I'll give you one personal story. I started looking into this in February of twenty-twenty-one. Well, Luca was killed in, in May of twenty-twenty-one. So I was already planning to do this project, and then that happened. And all that did was motivate me to continue to find ways to make it happen. And obviously, it's been, it's been a long road, but at the same time, with your guys' assistance and partnering with us, uh, it's going to be a huge success and, and it's going to impact people in our agency and hopefully, uh, exponentially. I think there's one bullet on there. So that kind of wraps it up, and I, you know, Tim, I don't know if I want to send it back to you in case I, you know, we, we obviously chatted a couple of times before this, and just to make sure, uh, there's anything else we want to cover.
Thank you, Aaron, I really appreciate it. Uh, just to sum up, uh, it's our desire to help empower our members to do more uh, and uh, really wrap their heads around what they can do on the mental health side of things. We want to look at mental health resources in the same way that we look at chemical safety or fall protection or some other kind of safety training. There's a loss control aspect to this that we can really help our members on. And I believe that there's a definite connection uh, to uh, the results of uh, uh, of our employees' uh, health, the department's functionality, and then also our work comp program. Uh, we do not want to replace EAPs. We do not want to encourage any kind of employee assistance programs going away, they're very cost-effective. They're very uh, useful. We want to focus this on public safety departments, where the uh, interactions uh, and potential incidents are, as Aaron mentioned, uh, numerous and unpredictable, but definitely going to happen. Uh, that's the end of our presentation. We'd like to open the floor for discussion, feedback, questions, anything that you'd like to bring up.
I'd like to get our agency started. I like to, to have scheduled a meeting with this police chief and our risk manager. We can talk about implementing this stuff. In fact, we recently in our agency just had them utilize services similar to that, the local officers.
Right. Yeah, the function uh, uh, of risk management services is funneled through the risk manager. I think you're Bell Gardens, right? So that's definitely a great idea, we want to connect with our risk managers and uh, that's a great idea.
Yeah, and uh, to your point, Andy, um, I believe we're ready to roll out this program right away, is that correct, Tim?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Let's uh, do a quick check with um, people online, uh, any other comments or questions?
Question, how will they be connected to the mental health agencies? Or do we have a list of resources that you're going to provide?
Yeah, I can answer that a little bit, yeah. So with TCTI, we have, there's like eight therapists that are, that people can go to. And again, I didn't want to pigeonhole people into going to one person. So partnering with TCTI was strategic and you may go to one person one year and realize that maybe that's not a good fit. Because you want to find fit in therapy and, and you may not be the first person you see. So we have on our website, we have a peer support webpage, and it basically shows a photo of the therapist and a quick little bio of who they are. So that way, people can actually suggest the particular person if they choose, or they can just say, give me what the next one that's available. And so that's, that was vital for our partnership with TCTI to have that, because not everybody will connect with one particular person. We wanted to have the options open.
Thank you, Aaron. And to build up on Monique's point, uh, we do have a series of service providers and resources that we can suggest or, or hand off to the departments to, to learn about. Uh, Aaron is talking about the Counseling Team International, which is one of the large ones. Actually, a lot of, a lot of our members already contract directly with TCTI. But there are other service providers out there. Uh, and there may be someone more local or someone that is more appropriate for a Northern California agency versus Southern California. So I think the risk manager can work directly with our members to identify individual service providers so that the, the agency can make a decision on who they'd like to work with. Aaron?
All right, well, uh, I'm not seeing any more hands, so um, thank you to Lieutenant Schaefer for joining us today. And Tim, thank you for that great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you, appreciate you.
Thanks, Aaron.
And I believe this is just a receiving file, is that correct, Veronica?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. Um, next one is also receiving file and I'll turn it back over.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. Um, so um, on this next item, you'll uh, probably see that we've got a, a theme today, and that theme is um, public safety. Um, so the JPIA uh, has for quite some years, um, made available um, Lexipol Policy Manual Services to members. Uh, so this is basically a, uh, a service that is available to our member police departments, um, as well as fire departments. Uh, and it provides them with um, templates, uh, policy manuals, um, so that they can um, take those policies, uh, tailor them to their agency, then adopt them. And along with that is uh, something that's called the Lexipol Daily Training Bulletin's um, service, which is essentially policy-specific training. Um, we've recently heard from quite a few members that they are beginning to use a product called the Briefing Room, um, which in contrast to uh, some of this policy-based training, is really focused on specific um, law enforcement scenarios. Um, and so uh, we would like to uh, begin helping members by providing funding um, for this service. And so I'd like to turn it over to Senior Risk Manager Maria Galpin, who is going to present this item.
Thank you, Alex. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, as Alex mentioned, we currently provide our members with the Lexipol Policy Manual and D- Daily Training Bulletin, or DTB for short, uh, subscription service. Uh, the Briefing Room Training Platform is not meant to take over or, or replace Lexipol Daily Training Bulletins, but rather provide additional training for our law enforcement officers. Uh, we became aware of this resource through our members, which we do appreciate hearing from all of you and hearing about resources that we may not be aware of and resources that you're actually using. Uh, the daily, or I'm sorry, the Briefing Room uh, trainings consist of short training videos. Uh, they're accompanied by a worksheet that assists supervisors uh, with the discussion during the briefings, and also additional written resources to provide additional information for those that want to research a matter further. Uh, those that subscribe to the Briefing Room have access to a library of different training of videos. And every week, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, subscribers receive additional training content. Uh, currently, we have sixteen out of our thirty-three police departments that subscribe to the Briefing Room. And we have heard from several other departments that are, bless you. We have also uh, heard from other departments uh, that are interested in the service. Uh, but because of budgetary constraints, uh, that's kind of on the back burner. So this is uh, hopefully going to assist many more police departments with additional training for their officers. Uh, we've uh, talked to a few members that currently use the Briefing Room, and they've all provided great feedback. Uh, one department has indicated that the training is very simplified and easy to digest uh, for their officers. Another department said that the training uh, is very good and they use it on a daily basis for uh, their various shifts. And then lastly, uh, I've heard that the training also generates pretty comprehensive discussions, uh, which uh, for being a short training uh, segment, that's very helpful because uh, departments have very limited time as to how much uh, training that they can provide. So our plan is to reimburse departments that currently subscribe to the Briefing Room. And for those that currently don't subscribe, they're welcome to and also welcome to submit for reimbursement. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Maria. Um, anybody online have any questions or comments? All right, fantastic. And um, the same is true for this uh, particular program. Uh, we are ready to um, roll it out right away. Uh, so if any of you have uh, departments that are currently subscribed um, to this service, you can certainly submit for reimbursement, uh, or if your department might be interested in um, signing up, uh, contact us regarding that too. And I believe this is a receiving file too.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
For, that's all on the agenda, so if there's any other comments, questions from the committee? Have any? No? All right, well, given that's all we have, I'm going to ask for a, to adjourn the meeting to a joint meeting with the, the manager, the risk off, officers and the risk managers committee on November tenth, two thousand twenty-five at twelve o'clock in the California room here at JPI headquarters. So if that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Okay, don't move, all right. All right, thank you, everybody, for joining us today.